Yeah, well, if we, if any of us bought a house here in the last thirty years, we knew we had a dying school on the hill. So we're all kind of, had to know something was going to come to light to make a decision and hopefully the community can make a decision that's in our best, definitely for the students, yes, but also there's some broader, much broader financial implications of the choice we make as a community. And so, we're hopeful that the plan we brought forward with the excellent partnerships we've had to get to this point. We hope with, it's quite, it's quite a process to get to the plan, really only a couple of weeks ago finally settled on this. We're hopeful that people get excited about it, and even those that aren't totally thrilled about the, um, the cost or other factors can see that, um, that it's, this is our biggest shared investment and this is a good one. We're hopeful that we're able to communicate that. And the biggest thing we need help with is making sure everybody knows about it. So however, anybody, we're not asking you to sell it, we're asking you to reach out into all of your networks to just make sure people are informed and push them to the website. Have them ask us questions, have them come to meetings. It's great we have the attendance tonight, but everybody who's sitting there has been to fifteen of these things, it seems like. So however, we can reach more people so they're not surprised on voting day and they understand the, the work that we've done and really tried to be open, transparent, and engaging. However, we can get more help to, to reach more people, to inform them, the better. You guys want to speak to anything specific about the project we haven't touched on? And anything you want to add, I'm putting you on the spot a little here.
You cover a lot of great ground and a lot of folks here have heard previous presentations, but one of the newer topics is the discussion of sort of transplanting K through eight in this building. And I would just sort of amplify the, the one point that was said earlier, it was a little subtle, about capital expenditures to reconfigure this building to accommodate that student population. This, this is truly a high school, middle high school, and it isn't necessarily configured for special education and special instruction needs that are typically accompanied with an elementary school. So you'd be serving a different mix of population where you still have to have technical classrooms, specialized classrooms for middle schoolers, but also injecting that need for special education configurations and also trying to just get that natural light in the building. There's a lot of landlocked, you know, landlocked classrooms in this building now. I would see that to be a significant renovation to this building to cover it. If you go with, well, okay, with that scenario, less reconfiguration, fewer grades, honestly, the building is, is too big for a K through six. This is eighty thousand square foot building, your K through, your pre-K through five is about fifty-one thousand square feet. So it's a tough little scenario if you start to talk about just keeping your middle high school building and injecting a different population into it.
Is there?
No, I just said, that's a great point, and actually, I, that hasn't been really vocalized a whole lot that I've heard.
But I think the operational cost, in fact, is very whiny.
Yeah.
It just was a capital cost for that conversion that was considered.
Is there, I don't know if we would know this answer, but is, would we, would this building fall under the same, you have to be AED compliant? I'm not sure I'm saying that right. The minute, if you were to bus your kids out and move, the minute you touch the building, you then actually have to make the building fit one through eight? Or can we just throw our kids in the classroom and call this first grade, second grade, third grade, or is there laws that say you can't do that?
It's a little bit loaded, uh, question. There's, uh, there are, there's D E W applications that would have to be satisfied for, for K through six, for sure. If you do no renovation to the building, what are you suggesting?
I just don't know if by, if, the stuff you're talking about, it sounds like it's going to require renovations. And if it requires renovations to put the kids in here, that just sounds like alls we're doing is now putting tens of millions of this building here to then bus our kids out. And we should be addressing just that building and not putting them into this. I'm not saying that correctly, but it's.
Well, it's a pretty well said. I mean, I think that's kind of my, my point is that the, and you make it well. There's a capital cost attached to inserting or injecting a population into a building that wasn't designed for that age group. So, um, once you start renovating, that does kick in some other, some other requirements, but also you have to go to D E W for approval of when it gets here.
So Matt, I'm going to look at you just to nudge a little bit, to bring us back to this project and the pricing process. So we've had a couple of go rounds and prioritizing line by line and going through it again, line by line. Can you share some insight? You've done some, some big schools and other buildings. Uh, can you share a little, just to be, just for the board and whoever's listening, just to give a little bit more insight into the pricing process and your thoughts around that?
Yeah, so what we did is we took comparable schools that we have, industry standards, benchmarks with, with Vanwell on projects that, that we haven't been able to work with them on. Understood the program that you have, that you're looking at, and sort of looked at it as, um, you know, again, this early stage is not a lot drawn. I mean, essentially what we price is what you're looking at there on those sheets. So we have to, having past knowledge of how Vanwell designs and what their wall systems typically are, we're able to sort of capture those costs, understand the relative uncertainty and accuracy that we believe that this building was coming back. So we did price, uh, the first couple of meetings, we had a couple, maybe three different options. We had one with an auditorium, oh, we had, right, we had a, uh.
Auditorium, two-story.
Yeah, what was it?
That was the, the no bond vote pass.
Yeah, the no buck, right.
So renovations to this building as well as to the central elementary school building, if there was no bond vote pass, what would you have to do in the coming years?
Right, so we had that, that option, the two-story option with an auditorium, and then the one-story without. So we looked at it a bunch of different ways. We looked at all the fields behind the school, we put it in that way, behind the school. Um, and, you know, kind of taking the, the top of the mountain off to get those fields in there, and then we also now, now down at the new location. So, you know, there's a lot of benchmarks, a lot of experience that we pulled from our own historical database to make sense of the conceptual drawings that you're looking at right now. Another thing that, if I can just jump back on something that's not really being discussed yet, is really thinking about the construction process and the impact to education. I think the plans in front of you from, from a construction sort of standpoint is the cleanest. Um, if you were to renovate and add at the elementary school on the hill, you're going to be sort of on top of them while you're building, and then you flip them over and you renovate the other side. So it's a very disruptive sort of activity at the elementary school.
Twice as much of the interruption, really.
Oh, yeah, it's probably became a really measure of it. It's, it's, it would be.
The impact is much, much higher.
Not cost effective.
No.
No, and here, what we're going to do is the middle, the middle school, high school will tack in two summers. So there'll be really no impact to the education within, within the school. When the kids are in here, we're not. We'll be outside building the elementary school. Um, and then when the elementary school's built, we move them over, and it's just a very clean, low, lower, it's not no stress, but it's much lower stress on teachers, students, parents, with the scheme that's, that's presented here. It hasn't really been discussed in any forum. It's not really my place to stand up and, uh, and discuss that, but just so you guys know, it's the best.
Thanks.
I guess one, one more.
This is probably worth, worth layering on here that, um, that design and estimating team worked very hard to find that, that good balance of, of pricing and design of an exilient building. So, you know, you can always go with a less expensive construction, but then it's a building that doesn't stand up over time. If we're trying to build a forty-year building, something that's really friendly but institutional resilient as, as a school building, that's what's been priced. This is, this is a value-oriented design. It doesn't have, it's not the Cadillac, and it's, and it's not the Honda. It's, it's a good solid building.
It's all very durable materials. Um, you know, we looked at the existing high school with vinyl siding. You can even see some of the spots where the lawnmower or a student maybe threw a stone and cracked the vinyl siding. There's no vinyl siding on this new, in this good plan. Um, you know, it's thought to be sort of a low maintenance, durable facility.
Ted.
No, you just answered my question. I was going to ask about value engineering. It sounds like you pointed out, so, there you go.
I was just going to ask, between now and March, are there any other hurdles that have to be cleared? I know they were going to test the soil where at one point, is all of that good? Are we okay to, you know, build?
We are good.
I want to get Gordon and Ingrid in the conversation, so let's go to Gordon.
Gordon, we did test the soil and it's, and it's going to be fine to build on. There was some talk about the fact that because it, it had flooded during, during one of the tropical storms, that, that was all surface flooding, if you will. So that it'd be structure underneath. It's not, you're not going to get into a lot of major dollars to make that a buildable surface.
And how much fell? Is it two, three feet?
I was just going to answer that. So there was, in one of the first community forums, there was a, there was a question about, I remember when, and ducks bloating over there and all that stuff for weeks. So we picked that site, um, two, two and a half feet. We started four, and then, and then we started four plus, and I said, you know what that four plus means in dollars? And I said, okay, we'll break it back down into length. We will use as a sort of a ramp and stair. If you look at the, the drawings, you'll see a ramp and stair in that location. So we're bringing it up two and a half feet, but we're also ramping, and there's a stair at that length. So length is doing the transition, not, not bringing that entire site. It's more than the footprints, the parking and everything else. You're bringing that entire impacted area up two and a half feet to this point.
So no ducks with this plan. And then I was going to, just one more thing to talk about to pick up where they left off a minute ago on the pricing of the building. One of the questions that you will obviously face is someone going to say, well, they've given you a price, but who knows if it can get built for that? So we want, I want to elaborate a little bit on that. The reason that DEW was brought on, or we interviewed a number of firms who brought them on, is they're dealing with the experience of every day. What does schools cost to build? So it's not where, where the builder comes over and says, oh, I can remodel your kitchen for forty thousand dollars, and then they get thirty-five thousand dollars into it. And they go, well, we need another twenty thousand dollars. The, the team that you've assembled here through your, through your committee has been seasoned enough with schools that we know we can't go back to a fight of the apple. This bond amount that we're going to come to you with next month and say, please, put it, put it on your ballot. This is sort of a dry run for that tonight, and bring you up to date. We know that's all the money there's going to be, and every promise that you make of what the building will have has to be able to be done. Well, we all have a lot of egg on our face, so that has been well thought out, and that's why a special team was brought in this time around, so that you can feel comfortable when you're talking to your, to your constituents that, yes, the building can be built for that.
Is this a price where we say we're going to build the building for twenty-seven million and, or twenty-five million, and you find out there's savings costs and you can actually do it for twenty-two? Does the town benefit, or is it twenty-five million?
No, it's, it's that, the way the contract will be set up most likely will be what they call a construction manager's contract. It's an open book contract, so they'll come in and say, whoever the firm is, uh, and they'll say, we can build this building. Here's a guaranteed maximum price of twenty-six million. Okay, it's this whole project. If along the way, well, within this, there's already some contingencies that say, okay, we might hit some unknowns. So you get to remove this, this particular floor and you find out that underneath there's rock. Well, there's money already built in the price for those sort of things. Our experience tells us that on a twenty-five million dollar project, you're going to hit five hundred thousand dollars worth of stuff you didn't know. So you're going to hit that. Vice versa, if things along the way come up that you save money, and the reason it's an open book type project with a construction manager is if the pricing comes in less once they get to the final bidding, that money goes back to the town. Now, what we typically find that school boards will want to do is along the way, we'll come up with a list of options. So we'll use your stage as an example. We didn't put a speaker system in the stage. That might be a ten thousand dollar option. We get going along on this project and you suddenly go, hey, we've got some extra money. What do we want to do? Again, if it doesn't go to the construction company, it goes back to the school, you're going to consciously make some of those choices on your alternates list and say, okay, let's put the speakers in that we otherwise wouldn't have got. So you'll have total control over that along the way. But, so if you gain, and you look, it's guaranteed maximum price, but any savings goes back to you to then decide, do you want to give it back to the taxpayers, or do you want to put more embellishments on the school?
Yeah, and just so we're all, I mean, the board knows this, but just so everybody who's patiently going through this meeting tonight, just to clear clarity on roles, is Vanwell's getting the design and bringing us to the bond. DEW is giving us the pricing, um, to, to get us to this point. And Gordon's role has been, I was on the project last year, which was a completely different experience. I don't want to say anything more about it. So having owner's project manager has been fascinating to see different ways, oh, you might not have to do that, and just see just chunks of money that we wouldn't know how to manage or would think we would have to spend potentially, without the experience of building how many schools. So to have the team with hundreds of buildings under their belt, but to have somebody hourly, constantly talking, you know, watching that, um, has been a really good investment that's paid for itself a few times. Just, it's just been fantastic. So, just so we're all clear as we get to the finish line, Gordon's role is an hourly rate to watch out for us and help us navigate the process. And it's been a huge impact with the other, the rest of the team to get to the pricing that we're able to get to. Again, you think of new brick, new road addition, got in the school, not touching this building, not fixing fields, all of those others. So you look at the value add, this team versus our prior experience is pretty dramatically different. So, um, Ingrid, you've worked on an awful lot of schools. Um, we've covered a lot of ground. I think the conversation feels like it's sort of, might be tailing up, and go as long as we want. We're a durable group. But some thoughts that you have, because we've covered a lot before you got a chance to speak.
I guess when we first were hired to do this project, um, we really had no idea where we would end up. And I really thought it would be something on the old school site. And it's just exciting to have worked with everyone here, worked with the administration and the faculty, and to be where we're at, because we had no idea this would be the final solution. And to have the solution, as you stated, be under the twenty-six million dollar, uh, previous bond is just fantastic. So it is truly, when we try to do a public school, meat and potatoes solution in New Hampshire typically is what, you know, the bond votes when they pass, it needs to be meat, potatoes, and the needs, and not have a lot of wants. And that's what we feel that this solution is bringing. And everyone's worked hard to, to really solve a lot of different problems with us and challenges that we've had along the way. And it's, it's pretty cool to be at this point in December and not in January or February, so.
Thanks. Other questions or comments, concerns?
Just kudos to you guys. I mean, as a taxpayer, I feel very educated coming into the night, just because of how you've shepherded the process and taken the input from our consultants, our administration, and a lot of taxpayers at these forums. And you've come up with what, you know, I feel is a wonderful solution. And, um, I don't know how many hours you guys have put in, but thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, we, our, our commitment to total transparency and real-time information sharing had, but at least for me, the most awkward moment was when we told the community we were going to try to do K-12 campus. Our consultants were like, guys, that's going to be, the fields, uh, and no, we made a commitment, we want to do that. And when we put the eight million dollars up, we weren't saying this is what we're planning to do. We're saying to do this, this is what it's costing. We told you we would do that. That was one of the more interesting moments. So it was great to see at the, at the last forum that the community was receptive to, okay, that's where we were at that point. This is what happens when you're totally transparent, is some things aren't going to feel real good while you're figuring it out. And then to, to, to go back to the basically half, so that was one of the more interesting moments. Because I think from a value standpoint, I think it would have been appropriate for us to not share that, because it wasn't what we were going to propose. But we wanted to say, this is what the community wants, this is where we are. So I think, you know, we're criticized for that, but I think with some of those things, are you going to be open? That's what you got to do. So that, that was one of the more interesting moments so far, so. So, um, I think we've, you have what you need. Again, this is informing you, so we're ready to go in January for whatever your opinion is. Other business, ad hoc committee.
So we put in front of you tonight, policy, uh, let's turn this around.
BCE.
BCE, uh, that's what board committees. And as I mentioned in the forum the other night.
Thank you.
Having dealt, really taken the dive into, uh, design and understanding design was, was, was conceived by our educational programs. But now really, now that we have our design piece completed, really taken, now taking back the look at education. And so what I'd like to do is, with the board's permission, is have an ad hoc educational pre-K through twelve, one-campus committee to look at, again, a thirty thousand foot view of what I'm thinking of, looking at our district's mission and vision, how to tie it to our strategic plan, and also looking at sort of that pre-K-12, one-campus, again, three schools but one campus, culture operations and professional learning. And so my thought would be to put an invitation out to the faculty. Uh, my, just quick envision would be two elementary, two middle, two high, uh, teachers, high school teachers, um, IA teachers, our specialty teachers, music, phys ed, art, two of those, and then two special ed. And so that, I think that's ten or twelve folks. I don't want to have sixteen people so we can't get things done. But again, just a nice sort of, uh, smattering of pre-K through twelve, public education, et cetera, for us to then take that thirty thousand look, view of pre-K, um, pre-K through twelve, one-campus, uh, again, the district, the mission, the strategic plan, and those other components. I don't see this as being, uh, uh, at this point, something that's going to be weekly for hours at a time. I imagine between now and the vote, maybe getting three or four meetings in to just have some initial conversation. Again, once March is completed, I think this committee would, would most likely devolve, dissolve, because then those conversations come back to me as a superintendent, and I bring them to both my administration and our teachers, and really start, all our teachers start having those conversations. So I would just need you to, I'm in the position, um, I forgot two people. I would love to have two people from the school board. Now, knowing how busy you all are, maybe I get one, but I would love two. Uh, if I could have a school board member on that, that would be great, or two, that would be great.
I guess you could potentially have three of us as alternates, so that.
I could have an alternate, yes. We have alternates on other committees as well.
So, how does this fit? On the fifteenth, we have to hear from you on the, we're going to know the operating cost of the building, we're going to hear your staffing proposal. This is, this helps form that, or this is what would happen next?
Yeah, so this is sort of happening, happening simultaneously. So I, I could see, um, if we get to March and again, a successful order, maybe before the March at the forum that we just set, um, maybe we get a little report back from this committee as far as what we've looked at from that educational lens. But I, I see this more deciding us to momentum for the passing of the bond, to then dig deeper into some of these thirty thousand foot, to get into, you know, the ten thousand, both the five thousand, sort of look at these things and really putting some solutions, some definite solutions into place.
All right, so what do you want to call it, so we can do a motion and see if there's a second?
So I call it the Educational Pre-K Through Twelve, One-Campus Committee. Um, you could just call it an ad hoc educational committee.
All right, I'm looking for a mo, motion. So we got clarification, now we can have our discussion after the motion and the second. So looking for a motion for, to approve the proposed educational committee?
Sure.
That covers it. The name's too long.
Make a motion to make an education committee.
Do we have a second? All right, so we have a second for discussion. So questions, comments? I, I think it sounds great.
No, I like it. It's, I think it gives a lot of input. You know, it's a different school, it's going to need some input from the people that live in it.
Yep, voices matter. This gives them a good place to do it, share it, and that's great, so. Uh, all in favor of supporting the, uh, starting of an education committee, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oh, unanimous, thank you very much. Thanks for bringing that forward. And the crowd dwindles. So there's three of you.
I'll come back.
Four of you. Thank you for all your time tonight and your work on the budget committee.
You're welcome.
Um, we have public forum. All right, Sue, got her hand up first.
Oh, imagine me. I'm sorry. No, just say that I'm so pleased that you're going to do a preschool through twelve school. Uh, I spent a lot of years as the head of a preschool through, uh, sixth grade and on a K, on preschool through twelve campus. It was incredibly stimulating. It was great for the older kids to see their former teachers sometimes. It was great for the younger kids to have mentors from, uh, the upper school. And the communication between the three, well, there were three of us that headed the lower school, middle school, and upper school. We met weekly, so if there were any pro, programs coming up or problems, we knew what they were and if somebody needed the gym more times because of something special, you could accommodate. And I would just say, uh, that it, to me, uh, your committee will do the right thing. I think it's a great thing to do, but I, I just think it's a perfect scenario, and I'm very pleased that you're doing it.
Thank you for speaking. Next stand up.
Next stand up. Sorry, Sharon. That's okay. I just have a question about the committee that you're forming, Russ, and just the ability within that committee to make any, nothing big, but any little changes in here if it enhances education. Is that possible, or is that?
So to honor our, to honor our policy.
Oh, I can answer questions.
I would say you guys can just go ahead and have that conversation, but we want to, want to just be able to get statements. So if you have an opinion of any kind, just so we can stay within our policy and honor that.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Change your question to.
Because you went first. No, I'm talking to Russ, that's fine.
Yeah, so, so one thing that Russ pointed out is, after you guys have the floor, we need to give him at least one board member before we call it a night for the committee. So I'm going to be looking down the line a little bit, and so we can think about, oh, we have a volunteer. So we'll get to that in just a sec. So you have that so far.
Excellent.
Um, did you want to say anything more? Okay, thank you for rolling. Sir?
So, I think you guys have done a great job. Um, I do have one concern that that, this is coming from a coach and athletic director, that four million dollar price tag. It's great that you came to cut it in half. Um, my concern is that could be the one that kills this whole deal. I know we talked about, well, the sports department are going to vote for it, but I think there's other people that say, wait a minute. We got a soccer field, we're getting a baseball, uh, soccer field, track, and those third ones.
Softball.
Softball field, and for four point something million dollars. I would hate to see you guys come all this way to the finish line, because when this whole thing started, it was the elementary school, we needed to do all this. So my, my recommendation to you guys is you do two separate bond ballots, so you put the school there, and I think that will be a support. I think if you put the fields in that, that could hurt you there, because you got the town waiting, they're trying to raise a million dollars, and they've got nonprofits going out and everything else. Other people are going to say the same thing, well, wait a minute, why isn't the town and the school committee getting together with this thing? It's, and let's go under the same umbrella and try and raise money for these fields. This building won't be built for two years. You've had swamps out here for however long it's been here and stuff. I hate to see you guys get ready for that finish line and think that this is going to push us over the top because we came in at twenty-five million versus twenty-six million. Granted, you've got a lot more bank for your buck than you had a year and a half ago. My concern is this is the Lebanon, um, concept series, where people went to the school stuff, but they said no to this. So I, I just, I don't know how you word it. If you word it, if the whole thing passes, great, but if it doesn't, are you willing to put this towards the school and keep the sports a separate? Worst case scenario, they say no to the sports fields, they say yes to the school, you've got your school now. Now you go back and you stop working with private companies and stuff, how can we raise this money? That's all I get to say.
Thanks for coming and attending and speaking. We had a, when we started the public forum, we had a hundred percent participation. Well, we've, we've gone through a lot of work over the years to, to have a public forum and keep it through some, some strenuous times, so it's nice. forum and keep it through some strenuous times, so it's nice to see people coming and using it. We do really want to hear your opinion, so we appreciate it. So we got to, we got to finish up.
Do I go home now?
Yes. We got, we got to finish up our work, so you can watch the rest of it on the video when we post it. Thank you for being here. So Ed, you are on the join that subcommittee.
I just said, I think that both of you have done so much that I'm happy to step up.
Okay, so do you want to have, do you want to consider that? So Russ is leaving with the one he needs, but.
I'll jump in if I need to as an alternate. January is my busiest month, I will jump in.
Okay, so you've got, you've got three, one committed and two potentials. Does that work?
It works.
No, I'm committed.
You got two, now Scott's got to commit.
Carrie and Ed? I'm committed as an alternate.
Okay, Carrie and Ed gets Scott as an alternate. Thank you.
All right, so we got that. So items for next meeting? We, we got that. No public? This is three and a half hours straight meetings, give me a second to get my bearings. We're good, okay. Post it to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
My second. All in favor of adjourn, of adjourning at seven thirty-one? Say aye. Good night!